Your mercy, your mercy and your grace. We pray, oh Lord God, that you continue to give recovery, Lord, to Tracy. Lord, we believe, and Lord, we know that you are going to do it. We pray for recovery for Roy Proctor. Lord, we know that life is in the blood. And Father, we speak life in the name of Jesus. Father, we pray for Phyllis' daughters. We ask you to give them recovery, day by day, in the name of Jesus. Father, we thank you for every person who is here. We pray for their family. We pray for their loved ones. We pray for this nation. We pray, Father God, that you will heal the land. In the name of Jesus, I ask. And Lord, I pray for direction for this council in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
All present. Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Law and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on a particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly, and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City Council-appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
I will approve the minutes of the August 3 regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carried. Not sure what's not showing. Motion carried. I'm not sure why it's not showing, but motion carried by unanimous vote.
We'll approve today's agenda. We got one add-on to us?
Yes, sir. Counsel, we have one add-on request. It's adopted resolution authorizing the mayor to submit the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development a review of permit requests for sponsorship guide signs on ride, state rideaway for the Brookshires Grocery Arena. This item is being requested due to the quickly approaching events being held in the Brookshires Grocery Arena and to submit to the Louisiana DOTD for installation of these signs prior to these events. And it's going to be a first and final reading, and that will be number 23 under new business.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the counsel? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Make a motion. Will you approve the agenda as amended?
That motion carried unanimously. I'm not sure what's going on.
I second that. Counsel, any questions on the agenda? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
It's not showing on the...
It's just not showing on the screen. I mean, it's showing, I'm seeing it, but it's not...
Yeah, we see it too.
Mm-hmm.
Showing on the screen. Let me try one more thing. I'll restart the meeting and see if that helps it. It's just not carrying over. For some reason, I can't make it slide over. But motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Any serious emotional matters or recognition of yesterday?
No, sir.
We've got some bid openings.
Thank you. Witness opening of sealed bids for demolition. Bid number 21-871-404-North Circle, Bossier City, Louisiana.
Good afternoon, counsel. This structure was voted by you ought to be demolished back in the July 6 meeting. There is no addendums. Our first bid is from Three Gen Construction LLC. Their bid bond is included, and it is for $22,073. That's 22,073.00. The last bid is from Redtail Contracting LLC. Their bid bond is included, and it is for $21,817. That's 21,817.00. I ask that you approve the reading of the bids.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the counsel? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Are y'all voting?
Motion passed unanimously.
Are y'all voting?
Motion passed unanimously.
Unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is witness opening of sealed bids for bid number 21-593-2453-Treschelle Street A, Bossier City, Louisiana.
Okay, this is another one that was approved to be demolished back at the July 6 council meeting. There is no addendums. The first bid is from Three Gen Construction LLC. It is for $7,673. Their bid bond is included, and that was 7673.00. Our last one is from Redtail Contracting LLC. Their bid bond is included, and it is for $10,0689. That's 1,0689.00. I ask that you approve the reading of the bids.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, unfinished business?
Adopt an ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the city of Bossier City by annexing approximately 1.111 acres located at 1755 Swan Lake Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7111. It's the Sterling Medical Bossier LLC, and that's a final reading.
So moved.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt an ordinance to amend ordinance number 61 of 2021 to correct the year of the Ferreira Inferno Pumper. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the, from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt an ordinance appropriating $300,000 from the EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to purchase three chassis for ambulance remounts. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Anybody got any question for chief? I know he explained it to us last week. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt an ordinance amending ordinance number 73 of 2021 to include change order number one in the amount of $33,403.18 for the Waller Avenue Lift Station. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Please cast your vote. New business.
Carries unanimously. Adopt an ordinance to declare that a 12-inch water main break and 24-inch gravity sewer main collapse emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health and safety along Robert E. Lee Boulevard at a cost of $482,502.78, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Lawler Construction for completion of the work and to amend ordinance 56 of 2020 allowing use of the surplus funds from the sewer sub-basin B.C. 25 project for the emergency work, change order number one, in the amount of $106,877 and change order number two in the amount of $281,187.71. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
There's a, there's a lot jammed up in this. I talked to Ben yesterday, and he walked me through it and then explained it real well. I thought maybe for the record, he could explain it to the citizens, everything that is in this.
Sure. As being here. Oh, there you are. We're in the first one.
This particular ordinance includes the reconciliation of the B.C. 25 sewer sub-basin rehabilitation project, which was a large multimillion-dollar sewer rehabilitation project down in the Shady Grove area. The contractor was performing that work was David Lawler Construction. While that project was going, we had a big emergency, big 12-inch water main and 24-inch gravity main blew on Robert E. Lee Boulevard, and we engaged them to come and support the city personnel in getting that fixed. And we're proposing to use the funding out of that B.C. 25 appropriation by the council to cover that emergency as well as reconcile that project, that sewer basin project, which is complete. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Introduce an ordinance to contract with Civil Design Group LLC to provide a traffic study for a turn lane located at the intersection of U.S. 71 and Golden Meadows Drive. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel?
I'd just like to say, I've got a lot of requests from citizens in South Bossier to improve that intersection. So, Ben, I'm happy that you're getting this on here. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Introduce an ordinance to contract with Nixon Engineering Solutions to provide construction documents for drainage improvements along Parkway Drive and the Elm Grove Ditch. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Introduce an ordinance to contract with Rayleigh and Associates, Inc. to provide design services for expanding parking lot at the Bossier City Municipal Complex. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Introduce an ordinance to contract with Rayleigh and Associates, Inc. to provide design services for Phase 1 and 2 of the Bardot Lane and Montgomery Lane Drainage Rehabilitation Project. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Introduce an ordinance to contract with Nixon Engineering Solutions to provide a drainage study, Phase 1A construction documents, and rideaway documents for Tinsley Ditch Basin Relief Plan. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Introduce an ordinance to approve the final change order for the Century Link Arena/Bookshires Grocery Arena Lighting Improvements Project with an increase of $32,995 to the contract amount. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Introduce an ordinance to amend ordinance number 49 of 2021 for the Bossier Fire Department burn building project with the increase of 86 days to the contract. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Introduce an ordinance amending ordinance number 55 of 2020 to include planned inspection of the precast, prestressed piles and steel fabrication of bridge girders in the amount of $400,000 for the Walter OBBB Carriageway Project. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Go to the second.
Ben, anything you want to say about that? Can you?
He'd be better table than playing all of that.
Oh, come on. Where'd you find, where'd you find him at?
Bruce Easterly, I'm the construction manager for the Walter OBBB project. And this ordinance that was introduced is for the inspection of the fabrication of concrete piling and steel girders for use in the bridge on this project. This is a very big bridge. We've got a lot of piles, a lot of, and a lot of girders going in on it. It's imperative that we make sure we have the best product that we can. The firm we're talking about hiring has worked for many years with DOTD performing the same duties, and I think we want the best for, for this project. I'll be glad to answer any questions, which I may.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the attached amendment with Mancheck Consulting Group, Inc. to provide for the services of interim city engineer for the city of Bossier City. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries with one against, and that would be Mr. Smith. Introduce an ordinance to authorize Mayor Thomas Chandler to execute the amended for attached access agreement with Greenfield Environmental Multi-State Trust LLC. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt a resolution terminating and canceling the employment of Sisong Securities Corporation as municipal advisors for the city of Bossier City. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt a resolution amending Resolution 56 of 2021, specifically Section Regular Council Meetings. First and final reading.
So moved.
I second. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the audience?
I'm Preston Friedley at 5004 Oak Alley. I just, like a lot of citizens, would like to see more inclusion, transparency. You come to the council meetings here in the middle of the day. I'm very blessed to have been retired, so I can come at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. But a lot of citizens in our community, I think you're aware, may not have the flexibility that financial advisors do, insurance agents do, who own their own business. I'd like to see more citizen participation in this council, and I think it's very important. If you can't change all your meetings, that several of your meetings should be held at 6 o'clock in the afternoon, allowing more citizens to come forward and participate in our local city government. So I rise in support of this motion. Thank you.
Counsel, I can say, I got one phone call. No emails on this, just one phone call. So that just doesn't tell me, that's what I have to go by judge, so that's why I want to be supportive.
Sir, you have to come to the mic if you'd like to speak.
You just reinforced it, so I appreciate it, Mr. Williams. That's the problem. Cities, citizens don't know what's going on, and they aren't aware to participate. And if you hold it at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, you're lucky if you get one citizen that's watching YouTube or one citizen that sees what's going on. And I would assume you, as city councilman, would like to see more citizens involved. And so I think if you were to consider this, I think it's something that would be very important so that your citizens from each of your individual districts could come forward and talk to you and express to you after business hours at 5 o'clock. So I just think it's a very positive thing. The fact that you got only one comment tells me, you know what? Citizens don't know what you're doing.
I respectfully, I respectfully disagree with you, but...
Mr. President, if I can comment?
That's all, Mr. Preston. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm not going to vote for this, and the reason is that we did have a South Bossier Citizens Assembly group where we had the mayor, department heads come and speak. It was open to the public. It started at 6:00 PM, and pretty much 12 people would show up that were, were residents. 90% were over 60, 65 years old. They could attend these meetings, and, and they attended the South Bossier Citizens Assembly meetings. Now, when there was a big issue, we would have a big turnout. When we have a big issue, people turn out here. They come if it's a big issue. The reason I, another reason is that it would cause department heads to have to work late. They would have to be here when the time changes, it gets dark early. I just don't think that the net result is any better, and the fact that you have to pay more overtime for people to be here, it would end up costing with no net gain. That's my personal opinion.
Mr. President, I'd like to say something. So this does more than just open it up for more people to show up to the meeting. Obviously, that was the, the driver behind it, is to get more citizens involved. And I think that the average citizen, it's easier to attend a 6 o'clock meeting. The other thing it does is it also opens the door for, if there's anyone in the community who chooses to one day sit in one of these seats that we're sitting in. If you currently run for the council, you have to be self-employed, retired, or just have a very flexible work schedule to attend a 3 o'clock meeting in the afternoon. You could be the brightest, most knowledgeable, most qualified person to ever want to run for the council. But if you can't even make the basic requirement of showing up at 6, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, then you're not even going to attempt it. So, so this, this does more than just open it up to hopefully have more participation. And I would like to say, on the point of you only getting one email, there was a petition that was started by a resident in District 2. It has signatures from all five districts, close to, close to 200 signatures of people saying that this is a change that they want. So this isn't a Chris Smith thing. This isn't a, you know, one particular district that's, that's driving this. I, in my heart, believe all five districts would like to see this. And, you know, we meet probably on average 35 to 40 hours a year. I don't think that the added cost is going to cripple Bossier City financially. I think that it's an investment into our community to let them be involved. You know, we spend money on a lot of things. $2 million sidewalks, $30 million gym centers. I think the, the small cost that this will put is well spent to at least encourage the participation of the citizens of Bossier City.
Mr. President, I'm not sure I heard Mr. Smith correct. Did he say District 2 survey? Did he mean District 3?
No, a, a, the petition was started by a resident of District 2.
District 2?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So just for the record, I've, I've been in District 2 for a long time, and this resolution before today, counsel, is not new. We, we've had, actually, I sponsored a resolution in the past to, to change the time of our meetings, and they were held at various times by this council for, for a long time. And I've had citizen district meetings, many, many meetings, and we had department heads present, and most of the time, I would say all of the time, we had more department staff than any citizen matter not the issue. People are interested in what they are interested in. There's, there's nothing about city government that if a person want to make the sacrifice to serve, they won't find a way to serve. I, I was not self-employed when I started on the council. I had a full-time job, a full-time family, a full-time church activities. I made the sacrifice to serve the citizen of District 2 because that's something I chose to do. And therefore, I would encourage anybody who wanted to sacrifice their time, their life, their family life, their quality time to serve, they will do that. They will make that effort. I don't have an issue having more citizen participation. I just know based on experience, there is a lack of participation at any given time, whether it's at 6:00 AM in the morning or 6:00 PM in the evening time. People are not as interested as you would hope they would be in city government. And I don't know why, but I just know that is the reality that we live in. I applaud you, Mr. Smith, for taking the initiative, and that, that's to be commended. But I just don't see supporting a change of, of our agenda at this point in time.
I mean, and I'd like to add, I do know that they were held in the evenings at one point in time, and there's a reason why we moved them back to 3:00. I think that times have possibly changed. In my heart, I do feel that we have more people wanting to be involved. I would be all for, if we passed this today, and there is no change, I would be open to talking about reversing it. But I think that, just to say we've tried it at one point in time and it didn't work, you know, who knows what? We can't obviously speak for the people out there, and so I think we ought to at least give them the opportunity. But that's just my opinion, that's why I put this up, and I hope to have the support, but.
Thank you, Chris. Yes, sir. Just state your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Lovelace, 1912 Nila Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. I came up, no disrespect to anyone, but I do believe in freedom of speech. I came up to second the motion from Mr. Freeman. I think he got a good idea, and like Mr. Chris said, we're not asking for everything to change, we're asking for a change at least one of the meetings. I think that sacrifice wouldn't hurt anyone. I think we are working toward a better Bossier. Am I correct about that? There ought to be some sacrifices somewhere. You ought to be able to consider not just your hours, but other people's hours as well. That's all I have, sir. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mike Lombardino, 5415 Pampas Lane, Bossier City. I would just ask a question. Is it open for compromise in the time? Say 4:00. A lot of people work 8:00 to 5:00, and if it's that important to them, they lose one hour of work instead of two. Some of these people, that two hour means a lot. And I was just asking, is it open to some compromise? I used to come to the meetings in the evening, and I remember we were by ourselves. I understand the overtime to the council, to the city. I get that. But would it, 4:00 be out of the question, through at 5:00, maybe 30 minutes of overtime for the citizens? Some people might show up, or are more readily available to show up. Just for your consideration, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the council?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Since Mr. Lombardino suggested 4:00, if Mr. Smith want to amend this resolution, that might be something he might want to consider.
At this time, I don't know if 4:00 does anything. If you're an employee, and your employer doesn't let you off to attend a council meeting, you know, we'll be stuck with the same. I'd be open to a compromise of, say, 5:00 or 5:30, but at this time, I think 6:00 is what we should vote on.
Any other comments? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion fails with everyone against except for Mr. Smith. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a water treatment plant operator in Public Utilities Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
This clerk, Madam Clerk, that is for and not against.
Okay, motion carries unanimously then. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker for the Lift Station Division in the Public Utilities Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second. Did we get a second? I didn't.
Did I skip one?
Scott, I think. I thought you made the motion, I'm sorry.
I have a motion by Scott, or Mr. Irwin, and a second by Mr. Montgomery.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a part-time ABO clerk for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a wastewater treatment plant operator in the Public Utilities Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Does it show up, counsel?
Yeah.
Yeah, it did.
Let's start over. It took a long time for that one to go. Mr. Montgomery? Is it there now?
Yeah, I thought I hit four, but now it's just showing zeros.
Okay.
I'm a yay.
Motion carries unanimously. Approved parade permit fee waiver for Great Strides Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, October 9th, 2021.
So move.
Chris, did you vote on that one? It's not showing up.
Yeah.
It showed for me, it showed unanimously. It showed unanimously with Chris. I'm going to put a trouble ticket into the company that the software comes from after the meeting is over.
Okay.
Because it's not projected on the screen like it's supposed to.
Okay.
Okay, approved parade permit fee waiver for Great Strides Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, October 9th, 2021.
So move.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt a resolution to fill a vacant front desk clerk in Animal Control. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt a resolution to fill a vacant animal control officer in Animal Control. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt a resolution to fill a vacant laborer 2 position in street sweeping and grass cutting, and backfill any vacancy created by promotion or transfer. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Williams, does yours come up? Motion carries unanimously. Adopt a resolution to fill three vacant laborer 1 positions in solid waste. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit to the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development a review of permit requests for sponsorship guide signs on state right-of-way for the Brookshire Grocery Arena. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Angela Williamson, Finance Director, Monthly Finance Report.
Good afternoon, counsel. You have before you the financials for the month ended July 31st, 2021. The first page is the revenue report. The city's currently running 120% to budget. Gaming revenue dropped slightly during July, but is still doing well. Sales tax is also doing well, up 7.6% compared to July 2020. The month-to-month between years is becoming more comparable due to the effects of COVID beginning to level out around this time prior year. Page 2 is the expense report. The city is currently running 6% under budget. The alternative fuel stations are notably over budget, but the revenue is as well at 136%. Page 3 is the sales tax comparative report. As previously stated, the sales tax revenue is up 7.6% compared to July 2020. Current year's sales tax revenues are beginning to be more comparable with 2020, which was affected by COVID. The last page is the manning report. The city has the same number of employees as last month. The total employees as of July 31st, 2020 is 672. This is 22 employees below the budgeted total of 694. Are there any questions?
Angela, we used to get a water and sewer report along with this, and I think during the transition, I think Ben would kind of put that over for a while, but I enjoyed seeing it with this report.
Okay.
Could we get it?
Yes, sir.
At the same time that we get this report?
Yes, sir, we'll have it going forward.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Angela.
Any other questions?
You're familiar with that report and the different timeframes that were on it?
I'll have to research it and update it for current year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I think this is perhaps Ms. Williams' first time.
It is.
It's her first time presenting to us.
You did a great job. Thank you so much.
Monthly project report from the Engineering Department. I never know who's doing it, guys, so.
Good afternoon, counsel. We're going to go through our engineering monthly update report, go over the projects that we've got continuing going on. We've got $136 million going on design and construction, with 127 actually under construction. Nine projects in the designer bid phase, 18 that are actually under construction, with seven subdivisions at or nearing the construction phase. Phase 1 of the Carriage Way, still here. Spoke with a contractor last week. The final items for delivery should be here, hopefully by the end of next week. They said about two weeks out for installation, and we'll be able to wrap this project up. Swan Lake Road, we've got some final striping that's been done. I think we've got some of the final striping at the Monica Lot intersection at Swan Lake. But other than that, we've done a punch list and final walkthrough, and the project is substantially complete. Coleman Street, this is a DOTD-controlled project, especially Tracos under construction. They've now shifted to the other two intersections on the project, and they are around 65 working days left in their contract. That's not calendar days, but that is working days. And DOTD feels very comfortable that they're going to be completed in that timeframe. Highway 71 Streetscape, Phase 1, got a nice updated picture here, and they're at 80% complete, 74% time elapsed. This was as of, I believe, the end of June. We have not gotten updated payout for July. I believe they are nearing completion, getting towards doing a final walkthrough, and looking for any deficiencies prior to the city accepting it.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes, sir.
I've had some feedback on some trees that have died, that they planted. And what I, just for the information purposes for the citizens, I've gotten some feedback from the administration that they're aware that some of the trees have died. I believe the plan is to just water the heck out of the ones that are still alive and see which ones make it. My understanding is that the trees are under warranty from the landscaper, and that the trees will be replaced when the weather is appropriate for planting trees.
Yes, sir. Currently, the trees are still under contract and under the jurisdiction of the contractor, and we'll make sure that before the city accepts anything, any deficiencies are corrected.
But, you know, you can't replant the trees when it's 100 degrees. I think there's a horticulture rule, and I'm not a horticulturist, but.
And I'm not landscape architect.
But it could be, you know, a different time, like December, January, when the trees will have a better chance of survival.
I believe the designer's in coordination with the contractor and the irrigation.
Because I don't want to plant them again and have them die again.
I completely understand.
What they did, I think I asked a question a couple weeks ago about the irrigation. Don't they have sprinklers on them?
Yes, sir, they do, and I'm not sure the time that they're being here, or the frequency that they're being done, but I do know that is being handled.
Thank you.
Okay. Tinsley, we are at 80% complete, with 94% of the time elapsed. That is as of the end of last month. They are trying to wrap up as quickly as possible. That is the new facility. You can barely see up there in the top-left corner. They've got turf on the new fields, got a lot of the retaining walls. They're pouring a lot of concrete, about 100 cubic yards every four days, and they're trying to move quickly and get that completed. East Paint Fire Station, this is just now getting off the ground. We only have one payout come through, and that's basically just getting stored materials and getting that project out of the ground, and so we're just in the early stages of that construction. Cliff and Almond Park Restrooms, we're sitting about 37% complete, and 50% time elapsed. You can see some of the CMU block coming up. They should be making a lot of progress now that they're out of the ground, and they'll start finishing touches on it. Citywide Street Improvements, this is one of the sidewalks as part of this project. I believe that's in Green Acres, and we're tearing up the world, so we're trying to make as much progress as we can. The sidewalks, they are doing. Green Acres should be moving back to South Bossier and hitting some additional items down there. We also have construction going on on Mayfair Court, North Park, and I believe the Nice Circle as well, and Michael Street as well. And so, once those are completed, we'll be moving to the next sections. Got private development going on. I believe top-left is Tiburon, Unit Number 15. They're getting ready to start cutting in the street. I believe water and sewer have already been installed, and we'll be blowing and going on that. Projects out to bid or in the design, we've got Phase 2 of Highway 71 Lighting. We're waiting on final plans for a minute, and we should be able to go out for bids for that. South Bossier Capital Improvements, that is currently being advertised. I do not know the bid date off the top of my head, but I do know it's coming up. Highway 71 Left Turn Lane, early stages of design, as well as the Tinsley Drainage Basin improvements, City Hall parking lot expansion, Bar Dot Montgomery Lane Drainage improvements, and the Elm Grove and Parkway Drive Drainage improvements. Those will be in design in the next coming weeks. Armed mentions, now that school's picked back up, we're going to be engaging with urban systems to collect the additional data that we've been talking about since school's been out, and we'll start coordinating with DOTD to try to get that traffic study back underway. And we have been coordinating with the police jury and DOTD for the turn lane extensions at I-220 and LA-3 and Benton Road. And we also are looking at the early stages of travel signalization upgrades to improve the communications throughout the city on those traffic signals. And property standards there never stop responding to complaints.
That's true.
Any questions?
They keep them busy.
They keep, they're busy. They're blowing and going.
They did a great job.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
I do want to thank Dale. I had a complaint from a guy down on Fox Street. Backed up the railroad tracks, man, and I went down and looked at it, and it's all overgrown. But they had a crew down there today, bush hogging and beating up the trees and stuff, so I appreciate it, Dale.
Mayor, you got anything today?
No, not today, though. It's been kind of quiet today.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I just thought it would be appropriate to say something. I want to thank the maintenance group who put up the plexiglass. And just to be transparent, and just to be plexiglass transparent, I'm not being treated differently than any other council member. They actually have an option to have the same division on their, at their station. So I don't want to give that impression that Jeff Darby is special. I may be special, but I'm not that special. So it's just was something that I asked, and it was granted, and I appreciate that. Things mean the way they are in our world that we live in. And so I asked for it, and it was given. And I appreciate the mayor for allowing the maintenance department to install my ship to the next galaxy. Thank you.
Hey, you know what? You thought I had a disease.
And we have our first-ever third Tuesday meeting will be next on August 31st.
We got a.
Our third meeting for the month.
Yeah.
So we have five Tuesdays.
We got a property standards administrator here, you know, the 24th.
On the 24th, yes, on the 24th.
All right, anything else, counsel? Maybe adjourned.